I hereby call the Jefferson County Regional Planning Commission. Having a forum present, I think that the chairman is not here, it would be suit again. So having a forum, we shall proceed. I would ask the members that had an opportunity to review the minutes from the past meeting, any change or corrections, please make note, otherwise I'm looking for approval.
One correction to the minutes.
Okay.
I think it has charged Mr. Morgan made a motion to adjourn, how was that?
(laughing).
It's gonna be hard for him to do that, wouldn't it?
Okay.
That's the only thing I can't.
Please note the change in the minutes. So we would be adopting those minutes with that amendment. So unless there's anything else, we're looking for approval. Just gonna move. Got a proper motion?
Set.
And second. Any other discussion? Being done, all the favors say aye. Any opposed? Okay, do we have any citizens input tonight before the Jefferson County Regional Planning Commission? Okay. Being done, we'll proceed to the first item, and the new business, which is a site plan review for Lakeside Pines RV Resort, 44 sites at 1649 Highway 2570 east, Dan Ridge by Darren and Kelly Bennett and Appalachian Design Services Incorporated, Mr. Jeremy Fields.
Hey, David. Me and David went up already, but there's nothing going on there. I'll let him explain.
Are you Mr. Fields? I'm Jeremy Fields, Appalachian Design. You're on behalf of.
Okay. David, can you get your name then?
Jeremy, can I, I'm sorry? Jeremy Fields, Appalachian Design. This is a campground. It would be a daily use campground on a permit, 44 spots. The T-Dat has approved construction of stormwater. It is submitted for a septic permit as well. Water, sewer.
Is, he hasn't permitted yet for septic?
He had got permit.
No, it's not permitted.
Okay.
Fly it forward, right?
Yes, correct. It does have a office slash camp store. We're paving the first 400 feet and then the rest of it for now would be gravel, gravel spaces, gravel roads, with the option to pave that. No question.
David, have you reviewed this? I think it, does it not meet our minimum guidelines for a campground as of right now as far as sites and infrastructure? Does it meet those? Or?
This has proposed water with a, propose, what is it, two inch water line in there?
Yes.
And you've got a sanitary ceiling plus a forced main that will take it back up to the front where the field lines will be and that's.
Correct.
Okay. And I saw where you're gonna pave the first 300 feet as required by the site plan requirements for RV parks. Just a couple of questions. I may have overlooked, how big are the sites for the RV parks? I may have just overlooked.
Six to a third.
Yeah, there's a detail on C4 that shows the specific lot layout.
Oh, okay. You know, I was looking at the whole thing, I missed that diagram there. Okay. Where's, is there a fire hydrant?
I don't think we have one.
I didn't see one within the development. I was wondering if there was one at the entrance that would be able to maybe cover that?
If not, we can, we should be able to add one at the entrance. You know, we don't, we're not proposing any six or eight inch line inside the development, so.
Right.
You know, it probably shouldn't be hard to add.
Typically, they want one every 500 feet, right?
So everything's within 500 feet.
Okay. Would that be within 500 feet at the sites? At the entrance?
No. No, it wouldn't cover every spot, no.
Okay. It wouldn't cover the rear.
Okay. I was, correct me if I'm wrong, but I was thinking when we looked at that last one that one of the things that we stipulated in there was that they added fire hydrants up there to ensure that everything was within 500 feet.
Right.
Okay. So would that not be something that would need to be permanent for this?
That would be, right.
We've addressed this issue on other campgrounds, and I know what you're trying to do is keep your, the size of your water line down as you get in there, but it really does need to be probably a six inch line to another fire hydrant to cover 500 feet there.
If, I'm, I can't answer this, if we had a fire hydrant, if we had a six inch line and a fire hydrant, is it okay to have, you know, that dead line, that six inch line running down into the campground?
I would think so. In other words, what you're saying is that it's sort of just like a dedicated fire line, correct? And you would go off the other two inch?
Yeah.
I think that would, I think that would, I don't know, I think that would work. I don't see why that would be an issue. Matter of fact, it would be, it'd probably help if we could keep pressure up for the fire hydrant down there.
What it says about fire protection in the RV park?
Okay.
It says where available, where available a minimum six inch water line and fire hydrant shall be installed along drive so that all buildings at RVs are within 500 feet of a hydrant. And I, we recognize that you don't have a six inch water line throughout the park that's available, but there should be one, and I don't know for sure what the size of the one that runs along 2570 is, but I would imagine it's.
It's either an eight or a six.
Yeah, it's certainly suitable, I'm sure, for a fire hydrant.
Yeah, so basically.
So it is available, is what I'm saying.
Typically, typically like a fire hydrant at the entrance, and then they'll leave one there to cover the 500 feet either way, that's where they go. So you're looking at two hydrants.
Yeah.
And if you want to put it on a dedicated line, I don't, I don't foresee that being an issue. Matter of fact, it may be a plus.
Yeah, I know these things are expensive and I think they're, I think we all agree when we wrote the regulation that they're important for the public safety and everything like that. What about drainage on this site?
Everything drains through the lake. It's slow from, you're looking at plan left to right, and everything goes to the lake.
Okay.
There are a couple of existing kind of drainage ditches inside, and we're utilizing those and maybe relocating a little bit, pushing it just a little bit out of the way, but we are draining to all the ditches and then it goes to the lake.
Okay.
It's showing there's a pond on the, are you, is that, is that the state?
Uh, we're, I don't remember pond.
Yeah, it's showing a pond right here. I'm just curious if that was, I mean, I mean, it's.
Uh, no, it isn't.
Okay. I didn't know if that had been part of your drainage or not.
No.
I guess my question, I have sort of looked at what you're trying to do here for basically for your waste disposal, and it looks like you're gonna let everything gravity drain, gravity flow down to a pump tank, pump back up to your septic tanks, and then over to your leach line, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, I look here that you had soil map, 60 minutes soils, did you see that?
Yeah, we got a soil map on it. The only issue I have, which something we can work out, that's, you know, it's not a big issue, it's just the tank size. We've got one down here for a pump tank pumping all the way back up.
Yes.
Which we can't have a pump tank with a septic tank, so that'd be two separate tanks down there.
Okay.
That'd be a solid one and a pump tank.
I got you.
So I'm just, you know, working that out.
Okay.
But everything else, you can beat it in order, see if, you know, just the size of the tanks properly and doing this where you've got sanitary, 3,000 gallon pump tank.
Yes.
There'll need to be a septic tank down there. And even then, those one of the tanks up here.
Yeah.
Okay. I got you. Quick question, Tom. On these with, with those pump tanks as far as it goes, so on your pump, if the power goes out, you're just sort of in limbo, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Okay.
Most people have some kind of, you know, it's something like this, I can refer kind of the chat, yeah, where it runs up on the side.
Okay, in case they have to go down.
Yeah, you know, he's got one area, everything might have been gravity except one section down there.
Okay.
And he's got a generator for it, it takes up half truck there permanently as well.
Okay.
I was with TV, looking the same, same deal.
Okay. Showing here that David, he's gave, I think dumpster pad, which is one of our requirements to handle refuse and questions? I don't mean to do all the talking, I just looked at it and said.
Is that the road on the end, Mr. David, is it, is it a blow of a cut line on the, it looks like it runs past the 1002? Is that the line for the lake? Far end out there?
It's about 1005.
1005.
Let it swings out there.
Yeah, okay, it looks, yeah, it looks like it's about the 1005.
Yeah. We don't have any campsites there, do we?
From C3?
No, but if that's approached and.
Well, they'd have to get a permit.
I think right now, down that on that, I think in some cases at TBA, dealing with some leak property or grid wildfire, and I think they're allowing as long as the floor or the high altitude, something like that, above the 1004. And some of these instances, his pad, I'd say, you know, but now he'd probably have to get a permit from the TBA, you know, to build up behind that.
I mean, it is looked off the books there.
Why does that driveway propose? I didn't scale it out, but if you know.
It's 30 feet.
Okay, is that, is that whole park gonna be the driveway, or is that just the area?
Uh, it's.
Sort of like a right of way that the driveway will be in.
No, it's the driveway.
Okay.
It's full width, gravel, I think.
Okay, okay. Once you get past the asphalt park.
Correct.
Gravel, okay. Chairman, looks like each side has the required one parking place, while we assume there are the RV, because we know a lot of people bring a vehicle with them, that they come and go in, so that, we've got a parking area for visitors, and the office with showers and restrooms. Do you know if there's gonna be a, do you know if there's gonna be somebody there 24/7, or you may not know the operation of it?
I do not know that.
Okay. As long as we have, the tenants would have access to one, that's the requirement. It's, it's gonna be landscaped all the way around. They've got detail on that. Those later encyc, we do encyclopes, is that what they, they do? Anyway, Chairman, I don't, I don't have a problem with the site plan. I'll recommend for approval, if you all feel comfortable with it.
Subject to the two fire hydrants, six inch line, 500 feet, and them obtaining the septic permit, incorrect?
Yes.
And adding the tank at the, at the bait, at the, beside the pump tank, the septic tank beside the pump.
Yes, Tom mentioned, yes.
Okay.
We're gonna move the septic tank down from the top to the bottom.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Questions? Concerns? Okay. Being done, I'm looking for approval with the things here that we discussed that we think feel like will need add to the project. You have a motion?
I'll say.
And a second. Proper motion, second. Any other discussion before we vote? And your motion would be to accept, add the two fire hydrants, the six inch line, within 500 feet, so one's road and one at another 500 feet, cover the units, septic permit and moving the septic tank down, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that is the motion, and there's a second on there. So if there's no other discussion, we'll go for a vote. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Take these copies, I got one on these.
Okay.
Unless you will keep them. Thank you.
Are you ready, Dave?
Yes, sir.
All right, the next item is a site plan review for Douglas Lake Glamping at 1558 Bonnarosa Drive, Dan Ridge, by Michael Barasso and Nilsa Montan, Montanes?
Montanes, you were close.
Did you have, did you copy that?
I did.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
We sent out your packet, a smaller, but it's got bigger copies, we give you than that.
And then just to recap from the old ones, these are kind of a storyboard. I know this concept is something new to the area, so if you have any doubts, those are for you to keep, look over. It covers everything from A to B, outside of the parking area, which I was working with you today on. I can have that layout, dimensions, and how it'll be laid out exactly by the end of next week, so we can move forward. I'll make sure you get a copy of the document. You may notice there in that site plan that you have one in your hand, that we have a stage one and a stage two. Each one of those stages will represent six units, units representing tents, which will be done by tent masters out of Knoxville. If you've never seen them, can you let me? They're a local company here. They, they used to be down on, I might want to pass that around, just kind of give you an idea of what those look like in comparison to the urids. They're fully furnished, raised deck construction. Nothing on the urids or the tents will be done in concrete platforms. They'll all be done on post and beam. Those post and beam will come up to decks. Those decks will be proper size to fit each urid or tent, depending on their size, and I don't think that we plan on going any bigger than 30s in circumference on the urids. And then there'll be at least enough room in the front for a full deck for each campsite. So minimal impact to the environment, so something different. The idea is that we keep as many trees on the property as possible. Each unit, tent or urid, will be totally self-sufficient. They'll harvest their own rain. I do have three wells on the property, all fully functional. We will be using those in the case that we have a lack of rain in the area, but each unit will capture its own water. And under the decks, we will have capture systems that will hold and circulate and filtrate that water back up into the unit. Everything outside the tent or the urid will be a camping experience, back into nature. But everything inside will be just that, the poor mantra, the word glamping. Everything that you would have, the amenity of home, okay? So kitchen, bathrooms, living rooms, electric fireplaces, we will have no live wood burning on the property, it will all be propane based. The ornamental fires will be propane, the fire pits propane, electric heating stoves inside the ornamental fireplaces, but electric. Those electrics will run off of solar systems. Each unit, tent or urid, will have an eight to 12 kilowatt Tesla wall, which will be built underneath and have their own solar panels to generate power from the day, stored in the battery. During the day, they'll be producing enough solar energy that anything that's in the unit, whether it be LED lights, whether it be a hot water heater, whether it be whatever, TV, will be generated from the power. The surplus production will be stored in the batteries and then reused at night when there's no sun. Now, we have thought about in the future that we might go to some of the newer technology like magnetic windmills. They wouldn't be very large ones, they'd be four to six kilowatt producers, all magnetic, and each unit would have one running up off of its deck. So if we receive wind up off of the lake, it would just be surplus for the days that maybe we have elongated windows of clouds, et cetera. The idea is to get these people down into Douglas Lake, get them around the woods. The property will be set up with walkways to get in and out. The parking area will have a UTV, utility vehicle per, come up into the top parking, and then we'll be greeting them. This is more of a mom and pop mentality. 12 units over six years, it's not very big, over a five acre stretch. We'll bring them down to their campsites where they'll park topside. Those UTVs, utility vehicles, will be all electric. They'll be plugged into solar systems. The idea here is that we're not promoting an ecotouristic product that fringes ecotourism. We're promoting, promoting an ecotourism product that will actually produce its own power and not pull from the grid. The idea is to have as much off-grid as possible, okay? I was talking with Tom, he was out on the property, about gray water. Some of the new concepts that we're looking at today are systems that will be built into raised gardens. My, my image here is, and I already started to build one of the raised gardens, there'll be a garden for each campsite. The idea is, is that people would be able to come during the spring, summer, and fall, and they would be able to pick an apple, or they would be able to pick herbs from the garden. And to the left of each one will be a small eight by 10 greenhouse. Idea here is that we have winter, and that winter, we want to be able to still have clients up through probably December, to go into that greenhouse and pick their herbs to cook with. Or maybe they have children that have never got their hands in the dirt before, maybe they've never been outside, maybe they've never been in the woods, and we want them to get in there. So we'll have a main greenhouse where we grow seedlings, we grow replants, and then we'll be able to take those children, we'll be able to get them in there, we'll be able to get them in the dirt, help them plant something, see where they can pick it, grow it, and eat it, all in the same stroke, okay? That garden will produce something extra. The digester that I showed to Tom that he's got, and you can flip through there, you'll find in the back, waste management in that storyboard. You'll also notice there that you'll see the digester there, just go a couple more pages past that. It's a large black tank that will be seeded with cow manure or horse manure in the beginning. And as it's seeded, that manure will be used to take all of the food waste that's produced in each unit, and instead of it going into a holding space to go to a landfill, it will get be right into the digester. The digester has a large coupler in the top, you just pour it straight in, and then the microbes go to work on the inside of that digester, breaking down the food waste. So imagine that. Imagine what you eat every night that you throw in the trash can, or maybe you already have a compost, but that compost is out. This digester will be built into the greenhouse, okay? It's part of the greenhouse, it's part of the development of that product, right next to the raised gardens. Food goes in, it breaks down, it captures gas in the top half, that's methane. That methane will be then recycled and used as an ornamental fire pit or two hours of cooking gas that comes from the wasted food. Okay, so it does describe that there in the digester. That was the next page over. Yes, sir. A lot of pages there, huh? This one here. So this one also works with the toiletries. I don't think that I like that concept, it has some gray area for me. I won't be using it for that. I will be using, as you can see there, a composting toilet system with a rotational bin. These are residential models, so they can go anywhere from three to five weeks without ever removing the bin. Now, obviously, you're adding your P or whatever you might be using into the bin, but it's automatic. As you use it, it goes into automatic, rolls the bin. When it gets into the finished tray, at the end of the roll, it's pull it out, it's clean, and guess where it's going? Three raised flower beds for each unit, or into the flower beds and plant boxes that will be inside the greenhouses. The idea is to complete a full ecosystem cycle. Whatever waste we produce, we try and produce it minimal, and what we do produce, we put into a recycle system that comes to a finished product and ends up clean, back into the gardens, and is being used as an ecotouristic or bio-fertilizer, okay? So these are new concepts, I know they're gray areas for all of us, including me, and I'm 25 years doing ecotourism in Puerto Rico, now bringing it here to this beautiful place of Tennessee. These areas are new, but they're fully functional. They're reviewed by the thousands of people that are already using this biogas digester all across the globe, in some of the poorest places on the planet and some of the richest places on the planet. It's a functional system. I'm planning to bring one in just to get it up on the ground and see how it works, but I believe that that will utilize most of my gray water going into that, so showers, sinks, et cetera. And then that biodigester will break it down into a fertilizer, well then it will be moved into the gardens and worked down through a rock, sand, and filter filtration. and worked down through a rock, sand and filtration system below the gardens, okay? Now, Tom's working with me on that. Tom, you have anything you want to throw in there just to catch that one up?
No. The thing we're concerned about is state regulation as far as gray water goes. This compost tallis nearly like that is state-approved. But if you have runoff water in any kind of facility, building, or room or anything, then they require that you have a leach field to take care of the gray water. But the systems he's got, I'm talking to the state to see if they're going to allow this. If not, we're looking at going to some areas, getting soils to take care of the gray water. We're not going to have these sites.
The...
So that's the back?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
If what, everything he's wanting to use, if there's something catching, you know, from the state or whatever, then we're going to have an alternative to go ahead and just do the, for the gray water now, just go ahead and put it in leach field on the property. It's like Rick said, there won't be any eco-bike going into it or whatever, it'll just be, you know, the gray water.
The digester that we'll be using, sir, is not, there'll be no heavy waste or hard waste or... It will be food material that we're looking to eliminate from the system and then turn it into a recycle. So my thought would be that we can run our gray water through the digester with that and then have it produce out into the gardens. And then whatever doesn't get used by the gardens, then we'll work down through the leach field as Tom is suggesting, if the state doesn't agree with what we currently have proposed there. As far as safety is concerned, every unit will have med kits, fire extinguishers accordingly. I know this isn't a normal campground program. It's something very, very different. It's probably one of the first of its kind in the area. I do know that they have tents and urids up in Gatlinburg and in a couple of other locations, so close by. They're not ecotouristic-minded, let's put it that way. So they fall under what your normal campground is. I will be building a bath house where I already have on the property a thousand gallon concrete septic system in play in the ground. It's already there and functional. And that bath house will have two stalls for ladies and two stalls for men. And it will have exterior showers during the spring and summer where they can rinse off outside. Just say they come up from the lake, they're dirty. And they'll have showers in each of the male and female stalls, even though each of the unit's tent or urids have their own bathrooms. Just to meet campground status so that we don't get out of, it'll probably be something 20 by 20. Again, on a post and beam, stick frame type design, something that will fit the decor of the area. That will be there. You can see in the site plan, if you look there, that you can see the areas where the septic are laid out. Each of the urids and tents are numbered out, one through 12, with 12 being the last to be built and one in two being the first two. The front three years, we'd be looking to achieve six and see how those six get occupied. If we have good occupation with it, then the next three years, we would go ahead and move on with the second sector or six more units. They did pin those, so there are ample space. We're not looking to have it crowded. We want everybody to come there and be able to stretch out and have their campfire, sit out in the woods or wake up to their coffee looking out over Douglas Lake. We're not looking for something that's going to be one space after the other, after the other, after the other. We want people to come and have a good experience in nature and see that they can do it in a way that's environmentally minded. Do you gentlemen have any questions for me that I could probably rattle on with you for all night?
Okay. But I think you go, the tree, but I thought the bamboo.
Yes. Okay, well, I will be eliminating all tree-developed paper. There's new products today that are completely bamboo. That includes toilet paper, that includes paper towels. Any paper products that you can imagine today. I have a manufacturer that produces it from bamboo, which is the fastest growing species of grass on the planet. And believe it or not, in Puerto Rico, I have a species of Asian bamboo that grows 16 to 22 inches in 24 hours under the right conditions. So imagine the renewable resources you could have from something like that. If I cropped 40 acres of pines and replanted them, I wouldn't be able to revisit that for another 40 years. So we will be taking that completely out of the loop where we'll no longer be using paper from trees, hoping to keep those trees standing where they belong. That's a good one. Totally recyclable.
So 12 units is the most you're expecting?
That would be my max. And that's what's proposed there in that site plan, 12.
Okay. I guess here's my question is that part of these are dashed lines and part of them are solid. So does that mean we're doing this in phases?
Yes, sir.
We're going to do the T6, T1, T2, Y5, Y4, Y3? That's your first phase then? And then, basically, I assume, would he have to come back for that? Or is that for phase two, or would he just be ready to go?
Well, I thought he would, if you prove it all, you know, if you prove it.
I put it in the site plan, sir, with that intent to approve it for all 12, but we can do it in two phases.
Okay. I guess here's my question. Because basically, this, if this, one of the things that we're looking at is that we would, the state's going to have to approve his waste system, the way that he's proposing it here.
For gray water.
For gray water, or we're going to have to go to an alternate system, which means then that basically he's got to have enough good soils in there to do that, correct?
Right.
So anything that we look at tonight and approve would be based upon, that would be his fallback system for the second, correct?
Yes, sir.
I have one, I have one question. I mean, I know this, I see this here. And basically, so the waste comes in. Who cranks it?
Are we, are we on the actual?
On the comp?
It's automatic.
Oh, it's automatic.
And there's multiple systems today that actually, the minute you sit down on it, separate the urine for you, your water segment, and it goes into an evaporation bin. And then it's heated and evaporates out through a stovepipe that goes out through the top of the urid, out the back wall. And then the remainder of the waste is cycled on an every six-hour windows. It will cycle. Some of the units are even when you sit down, they're automated to the point that the minute you sit down and finish, the minute it goes into the bin, cycles. There are manual ones out there that are really good, and I may, I may choose to go manual just to get people in the mentality that, remember that when we promote this product on a website, you're promoting it for what it is. You're not going to be in a five-star hotel only to feel like it. But you may be doing some things that are out of the norm. And that's the whole idea. That's where the teaching comes in. That's where we can show people that it's not that difficult to crank handle to get to where you want to go. You're not going to smell it, you're not going to, you know, deal with it, you're just going to crank the handle. If it's automatic, sometimes you lose the line of sight as to what we're trying to achieve. Wanted to come and have a great time, but we also wanted to realize that there's alternative routes to deal with your waste and ways to turn it back into the earth in a cleaning, environmental way that will be good for the gardens, good for the trees, compostable, so. So it's, the unit I'm looking at that you've got there in front of you, sir, is automatic.
Okay.
And it does separate urine, and it does put that into an evaporation bin so that all water waste will be evaporated away on those units.
What do, can you not put in one of those composters? I mean...
I can.
Can you put chicken bones in?
Oh, you're talking the digester?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. You can put any, any, any meat, plant, anything you'd have off your normal scraps off your table.
Organic, right?
Organic. It goes inside and Mother Nature does the rest. And you know, the cool thing for me about it is it, not just digesting all your food waste, but it's taking and producing a gas that I can repurpose now. So I'm taking my waste, I'm turning it into fertilizer, I'm cycling it, a full ecosystem cycle. It's going back into the ground clean, it's producing plants that are producing food. And on top of it all, I can turn around and I can take that methane that those bio-organisms are producing and I can start a fire with it, I can cook with it. You know, I can do something very cool with that. So it's a very cool cycle.
As opposed to adding to the greenhouse gas problem?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Just a little question.
I know this is all kind of, you know, off the normal routine. The idea here is that we're not getting away from oil and gas, but we can meet a medium here. You know, we can, you don't have to be fully dependent. There's steps around it. There's going to be places in there where I'm going to, I'm going to be probably having to use propane or I'm going to be having to use fuel for a backup generator system just in case the solar and the wind doesn't work the way it should. But the idea is to step out of the comfort zone and try something new and work your way through it. And the technology today is immense. It's right there in front of us and it's available, right at your fingertips, most of it right off of Amazon. So, you know, they're pretty cool stuff.
Chairman? Tim and I went out there and met with him earlier today and we got to talking about the site plan. This is listed as a preliminary site plan. But what I told him earlier was that, in my opinion, didn't have enough detail on some of the items in order to give it a full approval tonight. For example, the parking. It doesn't really show good ingress egress, you know, to the specifications that we require. One thing I learned today though, is you see the driveway going down and making a loop. That will very rarely be used by automobiles. Am I correct on that? Because what you'll do is you'll take them down to the sites from the parking lot yourself.
Yes, sir. We'll have a UTV there that'll be an electric unit. And when the clients come in, they'll book online, we'll know when they're arriving. And that UTV will greet them in the parking lot, and then it will drive down to the campsites. And it has a utility bed in the back that will be ample space to carry whatever they're bringing with them from the vehicles. The idea is to have the place where there's plenty of trails through the property for people to venture out and walk from one place to the other. Idea is to kind of get the cars all up in one spot. Several of these on the circle, you can see that the property already had parking areas. Two of them are there, Camp 1, T1 and T2, those are Tent 1 and Tent 2. Should be the first two units we build. They already have their parking facilities right there. So when they come into the circle, they can stop at the campground office, which you can see is in the top right corner there, the very bottom end of the circle. That used to be an old key shop. It's being renovated to become a campground office. They'll check in there, and then they can go right to their parking spots right in front of T1 and T2. I will be doing some other parking spaces to the front left of the campground office just for people that might pull in long enough to check in and then go back up to the top and pull into the main parking lot. My idea here would be that the circle would be just for the people in T1, T2, and eventually Y12. Y12 would be the only urid there in, close to the circle. You'll see it's to the front left of the circle there.
One thing I was getting ready to say was that it would be very little, if any, automobile traffic going into the circle. He wanted to use that basically to transport people by his vehicle. And the parking would be up here, so he's showing that as less than wide enough for two vehicles to pass. And I thought that would be okay if he truly does use it as described.
Well, the mentality here, again, even if we get to the 12, the front six, is small, focused on, really service-minded. My business is in Puerto Rico, 25 years in the kayaks and rainforest day and night. They're smaller groups, they're better guide-to-guest ratio than any other industry player that does it. I'm bringing that same concept here. I want to have it individual. I meet you, I greet you, I bring you down, I show you your site. I work with you the whole time you're there. Any problems you run into, I'm the guy there to get it fixed, so. It's very, very me-you type mentality, so.
The only thing, the only question I have about that, David, is that... And you went out there today and you went down. What about emergency vehicle accidents?
That was what I was going to ask.
The inside of the circle's just about nine feet. And that's the inside of the circle here. You're coming down this road here and you hit this segment through here. It's just about nine feet. This inside cut is, I'll be digging back and do a retainer. I'm going to be coming back about three feet there. So on this segment from here to here, which would be the tightest area for any large vehicle, like a fire truck or an ambulance that might have to make a tight corner. I bring a 3500 Dodge Ram down through there. So it's, she's a wide duly body, and it makes it through there. But I do plan to bring that back three feet. That puts me over 10, almost 11 feet on the inside of the circle. More than enough room for any emergency vehicle to make that corner. The rest of it's pretty much straight shot.
What about your other stuff out here? How do you get the ambulance up there?
Where are you pointing on? Where are you looking at it?
T8, T9, Y10. Can emergency vehicles?
There's a road there, sir, and it will be gravel in the beginning. It may eventually become asphalt. I'd really like to stay away from that if all possible. All along, Y3, Y4, Y5, T6, T7, T8, T9, and Y10. There's a road that runs off from here. Well, actually, it goes behind, if you see number four on that map. Number four in the box, that's the campground office. There's a road that runs directly behind that. And it runs right between Y3, Y4, Y5, and T6, and then splits off and runs all along between T6, T7, T8. There's a road all the way around, and then it comes back up and ends up on Ponderosa.
So you just don't have that shown on this map?
No, sir, it's not there. But it is there. It's not on the map, but it is there. My plan for that was to be a very large gravel walkway. It's about nine and a half, maybe 10 feet wide, level cut. It looks like at one time it was a fire cut there.
Chairman? When we talked today, I told them that I felt like in certain areas we needed more detail.
Yes.
The parking, for example, it doesn't show the ingress egress there or anything, really. Now, I saw it on, I saw what you were proposing when I went to the site, but it doesn't show on the site plan. And some other details I think need to be shown in order before we could really truly approve it, give it a full approval. But I did tell them I thought we could, if the planning commission saw fit, that they could give a tentative approval or a preliminary approval on this so we could feel comfortable moving forward. And provide, you know...
Based on the concept that he's looking at?
Yeah, yeah. It still have to meet all the requirements. It doesn't give him a blank slate to do whatever he wants, but...
No, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, we talked about that.
I think the parking lot area, I can have that for you within the week. Croy's already, I spoke with him this afternoon after you left. He's available. That's D3 surveying who's taking care of my work, can come back out and we can lay what you need in more detail. Sir, your concern is the road between the campground office and, what is that there? Y3, 4, 5, and then T6, T8, and T10. I can have him draft that up for you with dimensions so that you know exact the size. Is there going to be a problem with that being gravel? Remember, the idea is to get people off the green here.
It just has to be wide enough for emergency vehicles and it can't have over so much grade.
Yeah.
Okay, it's...
There's a requirement in our campground things that says that, here's the specification, if you do that, that emergency vehicle has got to be able to go in their fire truck handles, whatever.
And is there, is there a distance?
They got to be able to get to the, well, they got to be able to get to the site. They got to, they got to be able to roll up or they can take that out. Somebody has a heart attack in there.
Sure.
They got to be able to bring them out.
I think, I think that coming in from the circle, this is going to be too tight of a turn here. But this road actually runs out and comes back up right here on the Ponderosa. So we could have that, that emergency vehicle be able to come in from this side and access all of these units from T10 to T6, or I'm sorry, Y10 to T6. And then have full access here to any of these units, Y3 to Y5. And then have full access here to any of these units, Y3 to Y5. Those roads are already there, so, but we have access. And I'll just have him draft out the entrance from Ponderosa into the other units for you on the next one. That's not a problem. It's there, it just needs to be gravelled out, so.
So we've got, that's one thing that we need to be, to see, need to be able to see for a final site plan. The other thing would be is that, will we know, have any idea on the timeframe as to when the state would, is gonna let him know on the other?
I'm sure next week or so, probably.
Okay. So, once he knows that, then basically that will be the final, that will be able to finalize for you then what type of system he's gonna have. So we're taking care of that. And I think too, I guess one of the things is, and correct me if I'm wrong, does he have to have underground electric? Is that part of our, because he's already got existing overhead, so that was my question. I guess, well, basically what you're telling me is that they're gonna generate their own electricity?
Each unit will have its own solar and backup battery system.
So you really don't have, you're not having anything off the grid, so it doesn't really matter if he has underground, because he doesn't have...
I mean, I do, I do have, I do have Appalachian Electric Tower there already. I mean, if we had to splinter off of it, maybe for the, the...
Well, it's true. Lower.
So, yeah.
Bathhouse and stuff like that, it's right there. This is already done. My goal is to try and have each unit totally self-sufficient, off the grid.
All right. And I told him, Dave, you always put him back on the fed work.
Right.
If, you know, if he gets his...
To me, that sounds like within four weeks that he's getting half what we want to see.
Absolutely, I think so.
Yeah, I think we can have it sooner than that. But if four weeks works, that's great.
Well, that's, it, that's...
That's the next meeting.
Tim and I'll be glad to meet to get with him and make sure he has all the things we require.
So you think tonight we look, we look for approval for preliminaries based on the items here that we want to see on the next plan, right?
Right, right. And that, with an understanding that we need to see those items before we can go, you know, with the full approval.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Just gives him direction and I, to go forward.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
I like this concept.
Thank you, sir.
I stayed in the campground in Asheville, well, not in City, I forget the name of town, just a little bit out of Asheville. And they had, I think, six of these urits.
Urits?
And the, the manager actually take, took me down and, you know, they were old, but I was impressed. I mean, I've never seen that, that's neat.
You know, I was really surprised to find out that the US government uses urits in Antarctica, in the South Pole, in the North Pole, in some of the most extreme climates in the world, where winds can be over 150 miles an hour, and these urits stand fast. They can be in negative 50-degree weather and you're, you're fine. They're really durable structures, they're compression ring structures. There's something really cool. I mean, it's, it's a really neat concept.
Well, it was in the middle of, at the, the middle of December a couple of years ago, or last year, and it was like 24 degrees and the wind was blowing on top of that mountain. And it was just like being in your house inside that mountain.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get it all done, and I'm gonna give all of you the opportunity to come out and hang out with me and try something different.
How long is a canvas? Is it canvassed at least?
Yes, sir.
How long does that last?
Most of the ones that we see today are anywhere from five to six years. That's what the manufacturer backs up. It's gonna depend on canopy. Obviously, the amount of leaf litter that you accumulate down onto the structure is gonna degrade it. How much sun exposure it's gonna get would make another difference as to how quickly it starts to degrade. But when you're ready to change those skins, they're not as expensive as you might think. You're probably looking at about $1,500 to $2,000, depending on the size of the unit. And you're probably looking at about a week downtime to strip that off, depending on how many windows and doors you have in the urit, and re-skin it and put it back to work. Any other questions, guys?
I got a motion to approve here with the following items, which is showing the existing roadway that's there to the other units, and also based upon, from the state, if they approve your composted and waste system from that standpoint. If not, then go on to the alternate plan. Is that good? We cover everything there? So I got a proper motion, and a second. Any other discussion?
We'll make a second. I made a second. Who made the first?
Join me.
Okay.
So I got a motion, a second on the table, and this, like I say, is preliminary. So any discussion before we vote? All of the favor, aye? Any opposed? Thanks, sir.
You wanna take those copies back?
If you gentlemen would like to read up on it a little bit more, the story...
The copies in the site plan, you'll take back if you need it.
Yeah, sure. That's what I made them for, so you get a little bit more pointy with it.
You need this back?
Yes, sir, please.
Do you need it back or no?
I'm gonna pass these out. This is our other business already open. If you guys would like to go and see the Smokies through the eyes of myself and my son, we're happy to get you and your families out there and show you a good time. We are CUA certified, that's Commercial Use Organization at the Smoky Mountains. Thank you. And Tom, Tim?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time today.
Leave it over there, Karen.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The next item is a final plant review from Sherman Oaks, 32 lots off Nash Road by Ironwood Cabs LLC, Dale Carr.
Here.
Wanna just lighten?
Here's a sign, David.
Oh, good.
Looked at, sir, today, looks like all the sites meeting, it'll block size, fire management manufacturer over, it's already over.
Are these roads already built in your plan?
Yes, sir.
Fire hydrants in, water line in. We were down there today, midday.
The certificate for the street names has not yet been signed.
Except for 911.
I'm sure they're fine, but especially if you name Maggie Way after his late dog Maggie. And electric lines, otherwise, we've got, can help with approving, would I see that here, Tom?
Yeah, you said.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
Ownership and dedication. Streets by, by Charlie Tipton, that's critical. And just a couple of signatures, street names and electric lines. And those are the only two I don't see on here, so...
So what usually signs that afterwards, not to?
Sometimes they'll put on there that affidavit saying that they've looked at the concept and everything else, and, but a lot of times they, I guess, am I right, Brian?
Pardon me, that's, I was reading.
For Appalachian there, a lot of times they'll put a stipulation in there that they'll start the lines through the development as far as it goes after the roads are built, or, it's not, I mean, they probably looked at the plan and they've approved what's going in there, but they won't actually state that it's already in there, because it's not probably correct.
To my knowledge, correct.
Yeah. So...
As Dale talked to 911...
Parapoles are already in.
If you talk to 911 about the roads...
Oh, parapoles are already in.
Have you talked to 911 about the roads? Yes, yes, I have. The Maggie Way road stay and all the other road names have been approved. And if we just need those two signatures, if the, if the commission will allow it, I can get it subject to it. I'll get the AEC to sign off on it and 911, because we went over all the roads, and then the other two roads sorted to meet with the Sherman Oaks. The lady had already given us Maggie Way when we built those three houses down through the ice lane. So that road stays with Maggie Way and the two of me. I forget DNO or whatever.
If she's, if she's looking at just your signature.
The critical, as far as I can see, is the critical certificates have been signed, belt department and roads. Those are, those are the, those are the most critical of the certificates.
That's right, yeah.
And the other ones are just apparently pending signature. Tim and I were out there, everything looked good, didn't it, Tim? I don't have any problem recommending for approval of the plat, final plat subject to those two certificates being signed.
I'll get that just as soon as I can. Probably will have them by Friday, if that's okay.
Soon as there's, if the planning commission approves it subject to those conditions, soon as you can get the plats to, Tim seals at his, at the zoning office, if they can be handled, signed, and you can have them recorded.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, sir.
Everybody comfortable? Hold on. I got a proper motion. That's second. We got a motion now, second.
Second motion.
Second. Any other discussion? Not all of the favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, as long as you get those signatures, if you bring them on in.
Yeah, something you just bring in, I mean. I'm gonna get them two to sign off, both of you can order with that.
Are we getting that other one?
I'm here, I'll be getting this here, Ward, asking, Austin, yes. You don't want that back? To add more to it? Give her that, too, right?
Keep them separate.
This is why I need that good, this thing.
Yeah, make sure you keep that one signed. I guess. They said...
I'll check.
You wanna roll that one into this one?
Yes, Tom.
You was a lot of fun, let me say a lot. Let me say a lot.
You want these two, you all, to handle?
Yes, I told him.
I was trying to keep that one.
I got it.
That was the guy. I mean, everyone's...
During all the trials... There's another sign, man, you don't wanna...
No, 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 that's what your picture look at, David. That's what your look like.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, this is, I got you. You know what I was thinking of? Yeah, that's true, very.
That John Williams.
Thank you. We got, okay.
No, this is the, it is.
Is it coil road?
This is the, yeah, yes.
That one's two.
Pardon me?
That's perfect. Hey.
Now, this is not...
You should have seen me get this one, probably.
I don't know, you already announced it. It's not 94, it's only 27.
Okay, I'm fixing to...
The preliminary was 94.
I'm waiting on David to go.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, next item is a file flat review for 27 lots off Coal Road at Jefferson City Resub, a lot 11, a 12, 13, and lots 15 through 26 of due landfall property by Darrell King and Dale Carr. Okay. So if you remember, this was one of them there at 104, what, a couple of months ago?
Yes, sir.
And I think it was for 94 lots, but they're just gonna, looks like they're good in phases, so they're coming in to ask for 27 lots approved for final. So basically what you've done is, is that you've used your ditching rope, and it's just basically cut these lots off of the wood. And right now, it looks like there's no rope running, no new road that has been built.
That'd be the second phase.
So that's what you're approving, is that, so they're actually here, or, no, just ditching rope, no new roads have been built. And so basically, you probably, let's see. Part of this, I think, if we discuss this for, and I remember, remember, did they have to, did they not have to run some new water line? From down up or not? You remember?
Did you have to run some new water line or anything?
It's all showing existing poles. For some reason, I thought we needed, we only need six.
I don't remember, sir.
That's what I was thinking, that's what we thought. Right here is the proposed eight-inch water line, this dumped on Valley Road. Okay, wait, maybe, maybe it's here, maybe I'm just missing it. Okay. But I don't know where the eight-inch runs in, then it goes in here, existing four-inch.
You need her to go get the bill?
Yeah, I see, look right.
Word doesn't switch, eh?
I can't tell, just... So he says it's proposed, but you don't know if it's been constructed as well.
I checked the minutes for fire hydrants, but I didn't check what it said about water lines. She'll go run and get them right quick.
Well, it's got an eight-inch water line leaving Dumpton Valley.
I'd say that's right.
And it goes up there, but it don't ever say where it next down to four. Because it's all up here, it says four. It says an existing four-inch water line. Does it, is that where it starts or what?
Do you know where it is, Dale?
No, I don't, I just had it put down around the...
I see what it said in the minutes before.
See right there. Well, the reason I say is, I'm pretty sure we, we were subject to that coming in there and new water line for the fire hydrants. Ain't no fire hydrant on the floor.
It had no fire hydrant in the minutes, when you passed preliminary.
There was no fire hydrant, so it's black.
You didn't require no fire hydrants in the minutes. I didn't.
I can't...
Just take, tell you what the minutes said.
Unless there was something, Shady Grove says that there was not enough pressure there for fire hydrants.
Did you ever check with Shady Grove to see if there's enough pressure up there for fire hydrant?
I, I thought there was, but now I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna swear to that.
Okay.
But that's it. Go up to the eight inches, we can serve those lots that are on the eight inch line. And then the four inch on line would be just, you probably put the fire hydrant jack to the eight inch line to cover that with four inch.
I don't remember talking about fire hydrants. I meant to shorten the minutes, but she'll bring them in here, unless I'm just reading. I just play what I remember, sir. But they're floodlots, so how can you...
Well, it don't really make any difference if, if this is...
But I can understand if you build a road like that, but I, I don't... Well, you can require them anyway. You can, yeah, but I don't, I swear, I don't know if you did it.
But what I'm saying is, this is the final, so, so far we haven't signed a check.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So if we ain't signed a check yet, we can still correct our mistake.
I got you.
After you sign a check, it's hard to do.
It's hard to do, isn't it? I'm still looking for a check.
Well, you got a big raise being county employee.
I knew that was gonna... Did you? He never gonna let me live that down, never.
Well, yeah, all the county employees got a big raise this time.
You had a commission, did you? Were employees?
I thought you was gonna say that. New market... I thought you was gonna say that. New Market did, their commission voted themselves five hundred dollar bonus.
What you bring out of that major?
What, uh, to the commission or the New Market? I'm still trying to figure out how New Market got that.
Well, Charlie Gibson come in today and asked me if we got a raise, and I said, no, not eight years I've been there, commission.
Oh, commission, no.
He thought, I don't know what he thought. I said, I think school board might have got one, two, three years.
School board went from a hundred to three hundred.
Yeah.
Plus taxes.
Uh, two budgets ago.
Okay.
I thought that was right. Why we, what happened to commission?
Yeah, I didn't ask. School board, I asked, and they.
You can always go and ask any.
Well, yeah, come on there and ask, that'd be a good time. We're starting a budget, just come on and ask.
Yeah, I think I'll come in and ask. No one said.
Don't print it.
Too late. Dollars, what do you think? You have your problem with that, Brian?
No, I got second one, man.
Okay. I got two votes from commission right here, so, I mean, three, I'm up.
Hey, I ain't got a vote.
I did not vote on that, I wanna make that perfectly clear.
I didn't vote either.
Your over on the record, perfectly clear. I didn't vote on that.
Nor did I.
Well, Paul didn't say a word.
Trying to figure out exactly what was just said.
He said, Terry said that he had three votes from commissioners to raise up the rate of the planning commission a thousand dollars a week.
Oh, man, I didn't hear that. I thought you meant three hundred. What county give?
Well, it just keeps going up, I just thought we.
Inflation, I guess, is what that is.
Well, they don't give it, we are to give it.
What about just a straight four-figure salary?
Well, that sounds good, too.
But now, New Market voted themselves five hundred dollar bonus.
Wow.
The.
Council?
Yeah.
I went down to city, well, that was a year or two ago, they voted raises for mayor
See, on the commission, you can't do that. If you vote on the commission, it cannot take effect till after the next election.
Right. And I think that's the way theirs was, too, so.
But New Markets is not that way. They could do it right.
They listed in an article that.
Just give them Terry.
The managers do so. Yeah, these are out in the paper base.
Was you down there at that meeting, Rich Steve?
No, that was Mark Brown.
Oh. Steve ain't got all of them, see?
We need to fix that.
It says they used the road eight.
Road eight.
It's a proposed road.
Maybe that was two of phase two, that's the phase one.
Yeah, that's not, that's not what you're looking at, that proposed road.
It doesn't have it in here. Surprisingly.
So is that entrance?
Is that road eight? That's just a proposed, yeah, I mean, that's not there. That'd be on the second phase.
Yeah, but it says, Mark found it down here where it says, and it does, it says eight-inch water line from Dumpin' Valley to Road eight. Is that Road eight?
That would be the only road, and I think they'll be it.
So the eight-inch stops right there.
Okay, well.
All right. I guess we're, I guess we got my thoughts on that one.
No, we didn't require during the winter.
No. All right. So we have it.
So what are you saying, you can't require it now? If you're breaking this up in phases, it changes.
Well, it depends on when you go in here to the future development in there as to, on that preliminary plat, that was presented, what kind of water line, size water lines you showed in there?
Um, what's it say? Does it say anything in there?
No.
I, I don't know. You go get the letter, let him look at it.
Well, that will be the next page, I don't know if it's gonna affect this page.
September.
What? September.
Oh, you got your notes in September? Okay. So what we have is, is that all this is built, would have.
Six.
Six, but this is, this will have four, which means they won't be served by fire hydrants, so it won't be big enough to, for the flow of the pressure. So, all right. I'm trying to. I guess here's my thing. Have these lots changed from what the original preliminary was for the ones up the road?
Hmm, not to my knowledge. It's just, all he's doing is getting the road lots right now.
I, I understand that. But what I don't remember is, when we got in here, was there another road that went up here that had a water line that could come to the back?
She'll go get the preliminary, let you look, I don't know.
I don't get it. On the preliminary.
She'll go get it.
Now, this is gonna be a lot averaging as well, and I think I was.
Yeah.
The whole thing is, because the lots are, they're modeled, didn't.
Well, maybe, but it's a lot averaging enough.
Well, it doesn't.
Well, everything in here is, uh, looks pretty, I mean, looks pretty right.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a little bit above.
Yeah, a little above. So that's, that's, I just wasn't sure about. Didn't even have a five hundred in bound feature in there.
See, I, I don't know, I can't remember.
See, what's happening, now that on the flag.
Who was? Eight.
That's exactly where it was.
So the thing come up through, and then, oh.
Let's relook at this section right here. He already had those flag here, so, that's all he's doing is taking that, that's right here. So, that's what we have right there. And you have in here proposed eight-inch water line from East Dumpin' Valley Road to Road eight.
That's Road eight.
So, we've done exactly what we told them to do. Maybe it looks like it. Preliminary plat, but this is right, right on it.
Okay.
All right. So, based on that, everything, everything has proper road running, everything has.
Proper lot size, it looks like the building sit back wise and they placed thirty feet back to where they see a hundred feet. Is that the certificate for the health department? In order to ship the dedication, is it? Do you have your own key?
Okay, so all the proper, the proper.
Yeah, I think it's ready to go, chairman.
Okay, all right. Everybody, everybody good, understand that we've gone back and looked, and so everything's there, is what we gave preliminary for, except that it's just doing it in phases. There'll be no questions, I'll open the floor for you. I got a proper motion. All set. And set. Discussion. Do you know, I spoke, all of them favor I? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
You can get her those copies, too. We got what we need. Thank you, Dale. Tie something down our nice one if you can. Here, do you need the sign in?
Thanks, Dale. I'll be tomorrow.
Tim, you want to sign it?
Right.
Uh, yeah, I can. Give her anything.
Are you ready, Dale?
Yes, sir.
All right, so next item is the big study of the vision, provides the goals, objectives, and policies of Jefferson County, planning.
My God, the hands up, Bill. No. Everybody got one? Terry, did you pass out that?
I did.
Okay. That's just something Clinton Little said to me. Somebody did a blog on the lawsuit between us and Clinton, or Sean Wilmer. I thought y'all might wanna read it. No. I mean, you don't have to read it tonight, that's just something to take home. Watch it, Andy Griffith.
Could print on the back. Oh, yes.
Go for five. It's pretty interesting to see somebody else's point of view.
But when we went to that trainer.
You brought it up, didn't you?
Trainer was about two months ago, whatever, before Christmas, so, yeah, that, it was brought up by the instructor then.
Think we're well-known across state.
We're famous, that's true. Not paused it, but for the right reasons. Okay, Dave, do you want to start? Try to proceed through to that.
Yeah, I think probably the best thing, where, you know, we've been charged with reviewing and updating the Land use plan. The Land use plan is a document that has a lot of background information, a lot of maps showing where the roads are, where the steep sections of the county are, where the different soils classifications are, that sort of thing. Not to mention the fact that it has population projections and information based from the census bureau, based on, you know, the other characteristics of the populations such as income levels, pottery, number of people per household, that sort of thing, race, et cetera. Anyway, having said all that, the Land use plan section of the document really begins with the stating of assumptions that are based on the findings of those, of the earlier parts of the Land use plan document, where it has all types of information and that sort of thing. So I think the best place for us to start as we do this, is to start with the assumptions, work our way into the goals, and then the development objectives and policies, which is really what the Land use plan is. Starts out broad-based and gets more specific, and when it gets, um, when it gets to the planning commission and the county commissions, um, time to make decisions on things. If this is adopted, this should be what really directs us when making decisions. We've got the different, um, we've got the different policies of, um, for both residential, commercial, industrial, and all types of different land uses. So anyway, it should serve as a guide, and it's something that we really should follow when making decisions based on land use in Jefferson County. So anyway, let's start with the assumptions. Based on the plan that was done ten years ago, these assumptions, in my opinion, have not really changed much, if any.
Maybe done twelve years ago, by the way.
Twelve years ago, okay, thank you. It's twenty-two, isn't it? You have to believe that the Board of County Commissioners and the Planning Commission and other groups and individuals will work towards the development of Jefferson County in cooperation with local, state, and federal agencies. That's kind of an open-ended statement, but have to believe that everybody will be working together to make Jefferson County a better place. You have to believe also, assumption number two, is the Great Smoky Mountains National Park and adjacent tourist destinations in Sevier County will continue to attract tourists to the area at increasingly large numbers. I think we all know that there's been a lot of spillover from Sevier County to Jefferson County. A lot of this has to do with relocation. Anyway, Jefferson County's number three, Jefferson County's population will continue to grow because of its location near tourist areas, near Nesta Knoxville, and good road system, available land, available lake property, low property taxes, and natural scenic beauty.
My loss, Tri-Cat low property tax. I don't know if everybody agrees to that.
Everybody that moves in here from somewhere else agrees with it.
That's true. Anyway, those are all attractive qualities, and people are moving here in droves, not just to Jefferson County, but every, the whole world, the entire world wants to live in, in, in East Tennessee. I don't think anybody can, can contradict that. Increasing pop, number four, increasing population pressures will create a demand in Jefferson County for additional subdivision developments and housing of all types. I think we see that regularly. Jefferson County will continue to experience commercial growth due to the area's increasing population and traffic and interstate highway air changes. That's probably not as strong a assumption as. That's probably not as strong a assumption as, as, um.
That's all subject to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I understand that.
Keeps getting shut down.
Say what?
I said it keeps getting shut down.
Yeah, I think, well, and I remember when this was wrote, we, you know, we really thought four twenty-four would take off and, and, you know, the other interchanges continued to develop because of the increasing traffic on.
Kind of big pop stop.
High forty and all that, and, um.
Yeah, we wouldn't even let a truck stop coming.
That's a whole.
Don't get me started on that. That was too high. I went back today while we're on that subject. It was too high. I went back and, uh, you know, the, the rezoning we had on last week, there were six votes against it. So I went back fifteen years and see how many industrial, um, properties we re-zoned and how many commercial. We, we rezoned eleven industrial and, or is it seven, seven, seven industrial, which was all, except for one spotted bushes, all railroad, all railroad, all empty today. Um, twenty-seven commercial properties we re-zoned, and eleven or twelve of them are, are empty today, and.
Say that again, uh, twenty?
Twenty-seven commercial properties we had re-zoned in the last fifteen years. And of those twenty-seven, eleven still says empty today. And of the others, uh, businesses on there are more like storage buildings, um, stuff like that, nothing that, that would, uh, have over two or three workers.
That generate sales tax.
That generate sales tax, yeah. Um, so that's why I made that little speech, John Neal helped me at, at the county commission meeting. We can't keep running these businesses out of county. You know, houses, and John Neal can tell you more about it, they don't pay for themselves. So, you know, and that, thank God they listened to me the other night, it passed twelve-six. But we, and that was a simple one, I mean, I thought that was a no-brainer down there, as you, you and John Neal both all did. But, but this, I don't know, bothers me that this keeps going on. And, and I don't know how we change that with a land use program either. You know, Michael Fagan contacted me and Terry Bowe, want us to come to this long-range planning thing they have, or whatever they call it. And I said, well, I don't mind to come, but you ain't gonna like what I say.
Well, let me ask you this, just so I'm, I'm clear about this. Are, is the authority based on Tennessee code annotated, is that not, that authority for long-range planning not vested in this board?
It is vested in this board.
And this board?
It's the duty, it's the duty and function of the planning commission to come up with a plan for the development of the community. Says that in state law, that's almost as.
So this long-range planning thing that's been put together is a suggestion thing? All they do, all they can do is come and give a suggestion to this board.
Well, they have no real authority, but I, you know, I, we should, we should welcome, I think, you know, input as we go, as we go forward.
What I'm asking is, the, the sole authority on that is vested in this board?
Yes, that's correct.
And the reason I'm asking is because if the commission, if it comes for the commission, and it's a, an expenditure, I want to know, is it something that's already, if we're gonna replicate to it? Because if it's already vested in this board.
Something he's trying to get, I, I, and I, I know more about it if we go to the meeting, a grant.
And by the way, I'm gonna get to that, everybody on this planning commission is invited to that meeting.
Yeah.
It's just that it's nine o'clock in the morning on the, on Tuesday the eighth of February, so I, I had to, is that, is it here?
Here.
It is here.
Okay.
So.
And there's only, what, four county commissioners on that board?
I don't know, who all's on?
I think it's, uh, Fagan, Katie, and Jim Snodgrass, and Randy Bales, I think that's all.
Is that the total board?
I think that's what, the committee, it's just.
Oh, committee?
Yeah.
What were those names again?
Katie Huffaker, Jim, uh, uh, Randy Bales, Jim Snodgrass, and Michael Fagan. Is there somebody here? No, I, it may be Mark, maybe the mayor, but I don't know if there's a citizen though.
Surely it'd be an odd number.
Well, I, I may be, they may be another one I'm missing, you know?
No, I have no idea, I, I thought it was David.
You been to that, Steve?
Four commissioners and.
Was there another?
Citizen.
There's one that wasn't there.
One that wasn't there. Well, they didn't put me and John Neal and Paul on there, that's for sure.
Let's, let's, let's try to go on David, we'll.
Okay.
At the end.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't. I, I will say this, that, um, the county is free to hire, to have a land use plan prepared by a professional company, or a professional planner, or, or somebody of that sorts. But the planning commission really needs to adopt the plan, and the county commission really should adopt the plan as well. I don't remember exactly what.
Do we not pay you?
What?
Do we not pay you?
You do pay me.
Okay, that's what I was.
But I mean, like, um, there, from time to time, I've heard of places that have hired it, done.
So basically what you have is, if that's the case, then whatever they, their determination they make, it's a one-person input, the way I look at it, is that not correct?
That would be correct.
Okay.
What, that committee?
No, it, that, what David just said, if, if you hire, if you hire somebody to do your long-range plan, then what you have is, is that you have, that's the input that you get, is from that one individual.
Yeah. A lot of times they will hold public meetings, and they will involve the planning commission, and they will involve the county commission, I do know that to be true.
Okay.
And, um, I mean, it can involve as much as they, they feel necessary, as much as the locals feel is necessary. Those, those kind of companies charge a lot of money, and they put together a slick document, you know, one that's, um, really slick traffic.
Say slick documents?
I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to sell you on it, I'm just saying what, what happens in reality.
I, 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 I look for a slick document. You can't eat purdy.
Okay, let's, let's, let's go on.
Okay. I guess number six is not really all that true. Number seven, Jefferson County's labor force and need for additional job opportunities will continue to increase as the population grows and the percentage of the women in the labor force increases. Women in the labor force has increased over the decades quite a bit. Number eight, Jefferson County will continue to implement land use policies and controls to help guide growth and prevent the county from, um, from developing an inefficient, sporadic, and environmentally unsound way. We've all tried to do that, we know that, um, that's a difficult undertaking. In keeping with the, you know, if you have any, um, if you disagree with any of those, you don't have to tell me now, if you have additional ones that you think might be appropriate, I'd be glad to hear them anytime.
On number eight, so we come up with policies, controls, and we sit down and we looked at, so one of the things that we came into was urban growth boundaries. And we said, okay, anything inside this urban growth boundary here, we feel comfortable with development coming in there, alright? But anything outside the growth boundary there, basically what we've done is, is we put stipulations in, is maybe to expand the lot sizes and, and, and different things, because we're saying, maybe the infrastructure's not good, or this, that, whatever, okay? And I remember when I first came on and I saw it, and I looked at this thing, I, I really never thought it was fair, because it was an arbitrary line that was drawn down through there, and as a taxpayer in Jefferson County, if I was a property owner, I would feel slighted because somebody decided arbitrary to put that line here, I was on this side, and the other guy's on the other side. And I'm sitting here and I'm thinking, well, you know, I like to subdivide my property and get the most out of it. Well, you're under a separate, different set of guidelines, because you're on the opposite side of the line. I never thought that was fair.
But it happens, it happens too.
It happens, but I, I'm just saying, that arbitrary line, in, in trying to determine there as control growth, to a certain extent, I just don't think is, is, is fair.
Technically, it's not supposed to be an arbitrary line, you know, they put the way, they put the, the urban growth boundaries are part of the overall county growth plan.
They are.
That was established in, I think, nineteen ninety-four, I remember that's when they were first done. And, um, the whole idea behind was that, to designate areas that might eventually be annexed by municipalities, areas that are ripe for growth due to roads, utilities.
And I understand that.
Right, and, um, and the areas that were not in the city or an urban growth boundary would be one of two things. A planned growth area, like, let's say, we designated the interchanges as planned growth areas, because those areas we felt were ripe for development, commercial, if you will, and, um, those, those were areas that really infrastructure should be geared towards, you know, to help that happen, you know, that kind of thing. And then the rest of the county was supposed to fall into a rural area.
Yes.
And the rural areas were supposed to be areas where there was less density, smaller types of commercial developments, not, you know, big highway commercial developments. And the way the state law read on that county growth plan law was, after the plan is adopted, land use decisions are supposed to be made in accordance with the plan. And that's why you heard me say, it's not in, it's in the rural area, it's not in the urban growth boundary, it really shouldn't be zoned as R-one.
But we have that, but we.
We've stepped beyond that in certain instances, yes.
Okay, but we, we've also inherited that when zoning came into play, because basically, we've had developments in, in different types of zones that was outside of this growth boundary that was there, okay? So they, they existed already, alright, so, but, and so we have, you know, and there, various zones, you know, it's either A-one, I-one, we got R-one, in, in certain areas that are outside of the growth boundary. Some of it was in, in commercial.
In R-two, out, way, way out.
Way, uh, out there, okay, but, but then we put in the A-one zone there, which is, uh, is big and broad as far as it goes. But what I, what gets me is, is that when I first came in here, the thing was, is that if you were on this side of the growth boundary line, and you came in and asked for your property to be rezoned R-one, according to that, you couldn't get it. But the guy right across the road from you, he could get it. That just didn't, that just didn't seem fair to me, uh, on that, because an arbitrary line that was drawn for this growth boundary dictated, basically, what, that, uh, you know, to me, it was almost, I could take it, I, so he could do this, but I'm on the side of the road, and I can't?
Well, unless your property touches on it.
Well, yeah, I know.
I mean, that, that's happened.
I know.
But what you're saying is, it was basically fairly arbitrary.
Well, you know, I, I was never comfortable with that, I, I just didn't.
And it wasn't done by the planning commission, it wasn't even done by alleged, well, it was adopted by legislative bodies, but it was done by the county growth com, committee, which was the chairman and all the mayor, I mean, the, the mayor of, of Jefferson County, and all the mayors of the, of cities, cities and designated people of that sort.
That's true, I understand that, but then there's also the zoning designation that sent, that tended to go along with that. See, what I'm, what I'm getting is, is the zoning designation that went along with it. Okay, you're outside the growth boundary, so you're more, you're, you're more rural, but you're across the road, well, no, you're not as rural. I always just, I struggle with that, I still do today.
But I don't have to change it.
I know, but I'm just saying, but we have made a lot of decisions on whether or not to recommend property to be rezoned to a, a, uh, higher density based upon that fact. And which you said, basically, the state says that once we adopt that, that we're supposed to follow it. Then, that's why at the last meeting, I asked you this question. We, as a planning commission, we adopt that, which says that we're gonna follow it, okay? The thing is, is that we don't rezone property. We make a recommendation, so we submit this to the county commission, they look at it, it's a good plan, they don't have to adopt it. They can send it back to us, we've adopted, we have to follow it, but they don't, so they're not in violation of state law if they rezone property outside the growth boundary, are they not? Because they didn't adopt the plan.
Like you said, did it all done?
So that's why I'm saying, if I was a county commissioner, why would I plant my wrist down, or buy me down on something when I, I may see different than what the planning commission did? And I'm, I'm just saying that, that there, the, the land use policies that, that we've gone by, which was part of helping to deter growth, was the growth boundary, and then us coming up with a land plan, saying, yes, everything out of this, you know.
I think the county commission, or, or, or the city, well, the county commissioners, I think they're supposed to go by this, because it just says, as I recall in the state law, that all land use decisions shall be.
If they adopted them, if they don't adopt the plan, which we present.
Yeah, but they do adopt it, because it goes.
They don't, but you don't have to adopt it.
No, 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 no.
You don't. Now, once we do, we're bound by it.
You're talking about the land use plan or the county, you're talking about the land use plan, not the county growth plan, right?
Yes, the land use plan, basically, if we adopt it, and the county that does adopt it, then they are not held by that. They are not bound by it, because they didn't adopt it.
Well, I, didn't we, I mean, I wasn't on them ten, twelve years ago, but I think they adopted land use programs twelve years ago.
Well, they could, but I'm just saying.
They did.
It, it, so what we're saying is this, is that we look at our, our, our plan, and we make a recommendation for zoning outside of the growth boundary, okay? So that recommendation outside the growth boundary then goes basically to county commission. They have, they have a choice of either accepting the, the, our recommendation, or not accepting our recommendation, okay? So if our recommendation was based on the growth plan, and they say, we don't like that, we want, we want to go ahead and do it, then, then there's no violation of state law then?
I don't think so.
I'm just asking.
I think that the problem is, but I don't think it's anything that would ever be challenged in court necessarily.
So how is it violation if they don't adopt the plan?
It's not. It's not. It's not.
Well, I guess. It's only a violation if they adopt the plan.
Well, I believe they adopted the land.
They did, but I'm saying, when we're doing it now.
Yeah.
When we come in here with this thing, we're required by law to adopt one, is that correct?
Prepare a plan, it, it, I don't think there's anything in state law that says you have to adopt a land use plan, not like Florida requires. I know that, because I have a friend who works in Florida.
Okay.
And every decision has to be made in accordance with that, that land use plan in Florida, we don't have that in Tennessee. It's a guide, it's just a guide.
I understand, so, let's play this out. Why are we here, working on it, rather than just rubber-stamping the old one and walking on? Hey, we prepared one, we changed the dates on this, why are we working on this if we're not required to adopt it?
Why don't you tell him that, Tim?
Tell him the mayor.
Give John Neal my answer to that.
I, from the get-go, I thought we'd just rubber-stamped it to two thousand twenty, or thirty.
That's what I, that's what I'm asking.
But why are we here, because we have.
Well, we got to have the mayor.
I understand, but what I'm asking is, are we required as a planning commission to adopt a land use plan? Are we just required to develop one?
It says self-prepare.
So you prepare it, but you don't adopt it.
And use it as a guide, I mean, to, to.
Pretty sure the guide was adopted in twenty-ten, too.
They did, they did, they did, and the, and the commission adopted it.